I have an empty proposal hearing for old items discussion. Agreement with White Oak Cook in your package, you've got a letter and an agreement with White Oak Cook. Corner of Erie County, and by the cap development for the. And the executive of Erie County for us to subcontract forensic pathology to Erie County. Something we've done for almost not long.
This is, we did this every year, right?
Yeah.
We did this last year.
And the retainer has not changed.
It's all the same stuff.
Election time of that, what, fifteen hundred bucks or something like that?
Yeah.
Five grand.
Mm-hmm.
Push it. Do it how many times we use it, sounds like a pretty good deal to me. Any questions or concerns about this? Good for Roni to identify.
That's my question.
All right. Election IQ votes?
This is the same thing that we have, we have to.
Yep.
It's the same thing, it's the ballot, they keep the audio, and they're my one day election support.
And it's important to note that they were, they were utilized during the last election quite a bit because we had issues with a couple of machines.
They're utilized a lot, and it doesn't look like they're just sitting there, but. They're, you know, everyone who went out to the polling places were, you know, if I'm here on the phones and they can't call the voices and, you know, other machines or whatever.
So, this is 2018 general election, or?
No, there's, there's two votes in there, one for the primary, one for the general.
Oh, okay.
The primaries, the one most expensive is the core races.
Yeah.
In the primaries compared to the general.
Any questions?
I just think that with the machines being, you know, aging the way they are, that it's, the technical support is more and more needed.
Yeah. So, you got a vendor the other day, how'd that go?
Good, they're showing me the new upcoming machines that Dominion's gonna have out by the fall of 2018, much simpler.
So, when you say have them out, I mean, are they gonna be certified then by the state, by the end of year?
Yeah, by 2018.
For the 2019?
Oh, actually, 2019 election.
Okay, for the fall of the 2019 election.
Yeah. And they would come in and do all the training, there was a paper trail to it.
Yeah.
And the governor issued his directive that said that any new machines bought can have said a paper trail to them, so they've got all that covered, much simpler for the poll workers.
Yeah, that was one of the, that's been one of the discussion pieces, is about the idea of new machines and the, a lot of the people that worked the elections were concerned that it was gonna be a purely paper process, that it was gonna be real labor intensive and actually.
This is, I mean, they work very well, it's very simple, it's, they're very nice, and, you know, a lot of these things can be brought right off the shelf, then I get those with them. And they do have lease agreements and replays, they want to do that, but whole amount, they'll come in and teach me how to build a ballot, that's what I prefer, is to build my own ballot, do the audio, they'll come out and teach me the new system, and they'll also come out during poll work and train again, and help train poll workers.
Would you still need someone like this?
They would be the ones, yeah, for the election support.
You still have that support on the line?
Yes, yes, and with, in going through Dominion or even ESNS or whatever, their election support, you can have one day, two days, or whatever you negotiate in the contract. I don't need somebody sitting here Monday watching me take the machines out, you know, that's, to me, that's a waste of money, so I need them here on election day so that, you know, and then they're talking about trying to get these out so that when all the commissioners are on the ballot in 19, that, that'll be the first rollout period, so they've, they've done the federal certification, they're just waiting for the state now.
Yeah.
I'm kidding. Any other questions?
Yeah, so, do you have an estimated cost for the new machines?
Not really, because we have to wait and see which ones are picked out, I mean, there's different ones, there's, you know, we can do purely DRE, which is, you know, like what we have now, we could do ones that we, you vote on the DRE, then it prints out this long slip of paper, which is actually the ballot, and then goes into an optical scanner.
Okay.
So, there's different kinds that we would have to look at to see, to determine a price.
The, the one, I thought, the best one was the one that would end up, there'd just be one machine per precinct where you basically have an optical scanner, everyone would get a paper ballot, it would fill it out, it goes in the machine, it scans it into the database, and you have the paper ballot up there, so.
Okay.
Like, for just general viewing, you can go through the, the database to get whatever was done, and then at the same time, there's a, there's a physical paper ballot that can be kept for a period of time, so the people can, and that, that would be cheaper because right now, we operate, how many machines?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six machines, and we cut it down to twenty-seven point three.
Seventy-three. We're gonna have the scanner each precinct?
Oh, yeah, some backup, well, we wouldn't have the backup for each one, we would just.
No, yeah, we just have a few backups, but yeah.
So, the, the other thing is, is that they started setting up lease agreements for the machines because everybody's facing the same issue, because the machines are good for ten or twenty years, and the electronics go bad, so if you're gonna buy, those machines are ridiculously expensive, and so, a, a single purchase, like, we, if we purchased all, if we just purchased machines, like, I mean, it's like, what, like a million, a million and a half dollars to the county, and like, we can't sort that out in a single year or so.
And the good thing with these new ones, they, the, I don't know if you guys know what the memory cards are, there's no more memory card, and basically, the memory card is, the memory card goes into the machine, and that's what stores the results, and they, at the end of the night, they come back in and there's where the, the results are uploaded from. These new ones, they're all thumb drives, there's no memory cards, it's, you know, it's all thumb drives, so.
How long does the county have the lever machines before it replaces them?
I didn't know it was before my time.
Like, I, I was asking, can we go back to those? Those were like seventy years ago.
We'll go back to those. But, no, what they should be, you know, the day, very impressive, you know, quick.
The new machines are really nice.
Do they make them a little bit of T-CAP?
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, if they, like, if you have any issue with the card or anything, it kicks it right back, and so, like, it actually lessens the amount of work that a poll worker has to do, to be honest, so.
And there'll be no more encoders, where they have to encode, and those encoders are expensive, you know, a brand new one's for fifty dollars, and all it is, is like a little plastic, you know, and you've basically seen that in photo of the cards, they're expensive, you know, and the poll workers drop them in, and they break them in, and, you know.
Well, they prevent people from voting twice.
Yes, they, they can't vote twice, and it can't be hacked, we cannot hack.
All right, very good, anything else for Lisa?
Any new questions? All right. That memory, thanks, guys.
Tax claims, I'll see, we're up.
Um, so, I was, I'm just gonna do a new process for the judicial sale, basically, just like a procedure, right now, how it works is, we have our judicial sale of listed properties, we hire someone to research those properties, getting liens, mortgages, and judgments against those, and then we have to serve everyone, all those parties in interest. Now, from the time that we do our research, say it's January first, and we don't have our sale until, say, May, anyone who places a lien between January and May, that lien stays. Now, a lot of the public thinks that, okay, I'm buying a property judicial sale, it's so freaking clear, yes, but, if there's a lien applied between January and May, that lien stays. So, right now, as it, as it works now, as we do our research, we serve the people, and then we have our sale, all right? So, the process I wanna add into that, which would be increasing the budget, would be to do bring downs right before the sale. Now, granted, we would have to do it like two weeks out to give the researcher time to get back with me and everything, but, it'd be two weeks out, so there's still that timeframe of two weeks, but we've shortened it from, say, January to the sale date, now it's just two weeks. Does that make sense? So, it'd be fifty dollars approximately to bring down each property, so this year would be approximately two thousand dollars, just to do that bring down, closer to the sale. Now, another issue is, if we do the bring downs, and we find out, oh, there is a lien on a property, what do we do then? Are we gonna pull the property out of the sale and hold on to it for a while, which is gonna cause the technology out of the Bureau more money, and we might lose a year of taxes as well? Or we can leave the property in the sale and just announce that this lien would be still valid? I would still have to ask my counterparts about that, but, there's, there's a couple of things to consider, one is that we have people that purchase properties regularly from the, you know, from the judicial sale from others, and basically, this has been brought to our attention because, in one case, we had somebody who ended up with like an eight thousand dollar lien on the property after, after it had been cleared, and this person was saying, like, I'm really not gonna wanna buy properties from you if I can't get, you know, if I can't get a clean title, and, so, the idea here is to encourage purchases by making sure that the, that we've done as much as we can in order to accommodate, you know, the, getting them as much information on the properties to the end.
Yeah, it's supposed to be buyer beware, you know, it's, it's on their shoulders to do the research.
It's definitely.
So, we're, we're stepping out, and we're clarifying.
Is it for liens or is it for mortgages as well?
For everything, yeah.
But, I mean, is it as easy to look at the lien, and the percentage is, is to look at the mortgage in my office?
Should be pretty easy, I'm sure.
You could just do that?
Uh, I, I would be afraid to miss anything, you know, I like to have that on the shoulders of someone we're hiring, to know that they're looking and getting everything, I mean.
Who would you be having do that?
Uh, probably Scott Polkham, he does our searches now. Which we got in Ken Crosby's office.
Yeah, and then as far as the, I mean, my preference is, is to not pull the property, I mean, unless there's, there's nothing to do about the lien, I just think it's appropriate to then notify people, like, as a part of the sale, that that's, that there's a lien on the property.
Yes, sir.
It's just up to this date.
Yeah, you know, anything we can do to encourage the purchase of those properties and the reutilization of them are better, you know, and, and tax claim technically is doing very well right now, as far as distributing funds, you know, and, you know, moving in an efficient manner, I, like, I guess I'm in favor of giving them as much information as possible, I just, you know, like, the, like I said, like, the one person that I've talked to has purchased multiple properties from us, and now is getting handed an eight thousand dollar lien after, and, and it's buyer beware, I mean, and all the literature says it, it's, we're, we've been straight up about it, there's no guarantee of a clean title, even if people have that perception that there is, to say, okay, we've, we, you know, within the past two weeks, there's, you know, there hasn't been, you know, there could be something, but we've done everything we can to.
How does it read on the website, though, for judicial sale?
It says free and clear, there's, there's pamphlets on the website that you can download, and there's tons of information on the pamphlet, so.
But it says free and clear, so that's misleading.
Free, I believe it stays free and clear as long as parties, all parties in interest have been notified, because of tax verbiage and all such.
This is the other thing we've talked about, is, is making sure that all of the content is clear to people, that they're, you know, kind of like reworking that as a part of this discussion.
So, what period of time do you have, are you required to notify lien holder? That the sale's gonna take place and they're party in interest?
Well, I have to sketch it out, but it's, it's thirty days from the sale date for the advertisement, then thirty days after Marcy ends her serving, but then she needs ample time to serve, so two months prior to that. So, it's quite a distance from the sale date to when we do our research, is that right?
So, then you can't do it within two weeks?
Well, I can do, I can't serve, and, no, I can't serve that new lien holder in two weeks.
So, you, so, whereas if there's a new lien holder, they're not, you're not gonna be able to serve them in that period in the.
No, you can't serve them.
So, you're gonna have to delay that, you're gonna have to pull that property?
I don't know if we have to pull it, or we can announce that lien will still stay. Uh, that'd be a question.
Because there's gonna be a solicitor.
Well, here's what can happen, is that lien holder can come in and say, I wasn't notified, so they would petition the court to, to, what do you wanna say, void the sale? So, they weren't notified in that.
Oh, they would void the sale, they only void the, they would avoid the lien, lien still stay, your sale wouldn't be voided, just to.
Okay, but then you're, then you're back to the person being concerned about your sale, because then they still have that lien sitting out there, so you're back to the same problem.
So, they should be doing their research to make sure they've notified everybody, that's the way I can do it.
Well, the challenge is, is that this is not something that's like a regular occurrence, it's like a one in a thousand chance, but there's a chance of it happening, and, and I think that's the real question, is, is, it very rarely, like, by the time it's reached the judicial sale and it's on, in this property, everything that's there is gonna be there, and every once in a while now, in that span, like, literally, the one that I'm talking about, the search was done in December, and in the first two weeks of January, the lien was put on, like, how do you, you know, what could you do about that, and then, with the notion that the sale was supposed to be in June, you know, like, so, I, I guess that's what the question is, is, does anybody have a problem with the idea of, I suppose that we should research to a greater degree what we can do about the lien situation related to.
To actually leave it in the sale.
Yeah.
How do other counties handle it?
What's that?
How do other counties?
I'll have to get you out to other counterparts and ask them, see if that's a solution that we can do, or can we leave it in the sale, just make an announcement.
Well, you had.
But it really should be on their shoulders to do the research and make sure they're all certified.
Well, you had said that there were a couple of counties that did a, that did the dropdowns.
There's about a habit to bring downs.
Or bring down.
Yeah.
Um, closer to the sale, and.
It's all depending on their preference on what they wanna do, yeah.
This citizen that had the concern with this happening to him, I believe his comment, that I remember him saying, was that it was misleading, that at judicial sale, everything is free and clear of liens.
I can understand his comments, however, if he's buying a property that's a real estate tax sale, he should be aware of the law.
You're, you're right, but at judicial sale, it clearly states that it's free and clear of liens, so I think that.
Then it refers to the tax law, which, there's.
I understand.
Verbiage in there.
But people don't.
It's free and clear as long as parties are notified.
It's their job to do their due diligence, I get that, but I think that we need to do everything in our power to make it as clear as possible to them, that's, I guess, what I'm getting at.
I under, yeah, I agree with that, it's just tough with real estate tax law, to be clear on everything.
Well, I guess even a statement on your, the website that says, if a lien could be placed on this property between the months of January and June, it's up to you to do your research.
You still have the statement, we do not guarantee.
Yes.
So, that this, you might wanna elaborate on that, we do not guarantee.
Anything after such and such a date.
A clear title, yeah.
It's just, this is the way it's been done forever, now it's, it's brought to, you know.
Yeah.
Our attention, so it's.
Well, that's my thing, is, is we're trying to eliminate a very rare occurrence, you know, most of everybody that's involved in it, you know, has a good experience, you know, or as good as you can have getting property through judicial sale, but, I think this is the question, is, is, would, is, is anybody concerned enough to do bring downs, you know, a couple of weeks before, and then either pull property or notify, you know, on a particular property if the lien is available, in order to alleviate some of this concern over liability, you know, to a buyer?
When you pull the property, then when does it go back for sale?
Whenever the next judicial sale is scheduled for.
So, it's another year?
So, you could be sitting on it, losing a lot of your taxes. You'd be ahead.
Is this really a one in a thousand chance?
Yeah, how often do you see this happen?
I don't know, I mean.
Well, see, the problem is, is that we wouldn't know unless somebody came and complained, and the, and the point is, is that this happened, this, in the past few months, you know, past year, and, so there's a clear chance of it happening, I mean, but for the number of properties that we sell.
It could have happened before, and the person who bought it understood the process, and was aware, and didn't say, oh, there's a lawsuit being, or.
Yeah.
But there's sueable, you could be one of them.
As Commissioner Morrison stated, if you, and, and Denny, if you elaborate on that, that between, you know, are, there could be liens between January and the date of the sale, it is up to you to search.
I see, I had a verbiage in the newspaper ad that would state, up to the search at this date, so hopefully that would alleviate some. That's why, as I said, it's been done, the app and the same structure for quite some time, so.
I mean, most people know which properties they're gonna go looking for, so, a week before the sale, they can come in and search to see if any other liens had been put on between January and, you know.
Would the credit card lien have come up in any of the resources here?
Over.
If someone unchecked?
Yeah, over it.
Okay, then maybe that's the solution, is to have, is to change the verbiage and then to state that you can find more information within the court app, I mean, my thing is, is just for it to be clear as possible, like, a lot of that legal jargon, I mean, the minute somebody runs into it, there are gonna be people that aren't gonna read it, and, and the goal is, is to encourage them to buy the properties and to transfer them.
Yeah.
I think not pulling the properties.
And to be clear on the data of search.
Were, were you insinuating that, let's say, a property has a lien that's filed, when you do the bring down, that you would gen, then just include that lien in your purchase price?
No.
Couldn't you? Think about it.
Probably could, but.
Then you could satisfy the lien.
Well, that.
That you would just announce that this property, the price on this property has changed to, to a lien that's been filed.
Like, that's the whole thing, is, is just so that they're aware of it and included in the actual sale.
And then they find, they find out upfront rather than acting.
Could be another option, but I'd have to call them, check and see.
Well, I, I have a question on the process, if, between the sales, we have done research, and there's no liens come the end of December, and then we take this property to the sale in June, how long does it take to do that first search?
The first go around, it takes some time, because that's the initial list that, that gives Scott.
Okay, so then, how can he do a second bring down in just two weeks?
He would only have to go back to the date he started the research, he would have to pull copies of D's or the BAPs, or like a full pack ID, it's not just a lien research, there's some other bits to it, so it'd be, it'd be a pretty quick process for him, since he knows what he's doing, since he's already done that property before, he knows where to start off that.
Yeah, he'd just be going back the six months, the, the time of the last, um, search, and the, and the current one.
Yeah, I would have to get with them, make sure that two weeks is ample time, maybe it's three weeks, or two and a half, or whatever.
Plus, it's gonna depend on their workload.
Yeah, that too.
Maybe we should need to do both, you know, do the verbiage change, and do the.
Which one is it?
Yes.
That, yeah. Bring down.
And then, you know, then all of our bases are covered, and.
So, when I, thinking about that, when I do my initial ad, though, I'm putting a date that that last search was done, now I'm doing another search, paying more money.
But you're gonna add that, you're gonna add that to the, are you gonna add that to the price of the property, potentially?
Well, you're, you're already engaged in it now, why not, um, just, because you've already put your ads up, right, for this year?
I did, yeah, right.
So, why not just focus on the verbiage for that, for this year, and then research the legalities, like, we're gonna be doing the redevelopment thing anyway, we'll research, as a part of that, research the legalities of the, you know, whether you can sell the property with the lien on it, or, you know, the other options, to come up with some concrete recommendations everybody can review, and then go from there, 'cause you, 'cause we, technically, I don't think could change the process now, mid-year, if we wanted to, could we? There's, there's some time, too?
Yeah, there's some time.
Uh, maybe we should research it in order, and then.
Okay.
All right, so, did you get the direction of that for me?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else for tax claim? Any public comments? All right, projects, I know that Todd had come to talk about a couple of our active projects, I think that have deference to the commissioners, is there anything you wanna raise for us? Can I apologize, I tried to pull it up on the screen, and it just won't work. I'll give it work, so, all right, then Todd, you were gonna talk about tapkeeping and radio?
That's two of them.
Oh, dear. What else are you talking about?
Quickly on the radio, the P-25 project, you know, obviously, we've got some initial figures, and connecting in with this big radio system, but we had also us connecting into it, and then below the line, we had Beijing, and below the line, we had end users, well, I, the state has approved some other end users of getting onto the system, so, that opens up a new avenue of, of other bids, other end users, and, so, we need to, we're gonna get those bids put out to some other end users, so we're, we know what we're really looking at before we start talking dollar figures.
How long do you think that process will take?
Projects, and, our regional tap project is just moving forward. Oh, oh, sorry.
So, really, if you're putting something out to bid, Pam, how long do you think that would take? A month?
Yes.
All right, very good.
And I, I like to believe that a couple of these, you know, because I was informed that, that one of the large, the large state agencies was looking at purchasing more of these, more end users, and had pricing from another vendor of the Motorola, so, the biggest thing is, is we would be looking at, you know, using state contracts, so.
Right.
We wouldn't have to go through our own RFP process and all that kinda.
I see.
We could, we could save that.
So, we can just latch on to theirs?
Yes.
The other thing that I'm not sure if I mentioned enough, that Erie County has a open, they put it out to bid, and selected one of the.
Yes.
Radio vendors, so I've already asked the county executive if it's possible, given their open contract for all agencies in Erie County, and Warren County couldn't get slipped into it, too, so, if, if it's shorter to go through them, rather than going through a state agency that's currently in bidding process, or do they actually accept a bid?
I'm not sure if they accept a bid.
Okay, so, Erie already has it in place, and if we wanna act quickly, then maybe just going on Erie's contract would be best?
Right.
Okay.
Tap project moving forward, there's a clip about that in our county, so, we're, kick out meetings next week, March sixteenth. Sixteenth, so, that's moving forward, and we have a big Western rally.
When are we expected to go live? In Warren County?
Well, the, the, the thing is, is it, it turns out to be one of those things of, it's not gonna be a, it doesn't need to be a county by county go live, because, once the system is built, it's built for the region, so it's just like, it would be a cuddle, instead of, it's not like, the team's gotta come here, and, you know, the training and all already begun, it would be more or less just of, okay, whose turn is it today? It, it's not really gonna be a.
It's not gonna be a quick cross. It's not gonna be a quick process, or...
Yeah.
Then you have to the year.
Okay.
Probably the end of the year, but, but it's, it's not really a, you know...
Wait, the end of the year is when we would cut over, or the end of the year is when we can start playing with it?
The end of the year, we probably the opposite of that.
All right, so we'll be playing on it pretty soon?
Yes.
So, so the kickoff meeting, mid-March, starts out with GIS. So the entire system, GIS center. Once all the intersections, commonplaces, street spans can build into it and are functioning as, as intended, then there's a two-week period where we come back to Warren County and put together the next build week's schedule. So we'll gather all the data for the next, the next portion. And it keeps building out, they're gonna mess the schedule mid-month. But it's, it's a week at Elk County, a week back to Warren County, a week back to Elk County, and just bringing down the damage.
Okay.
It's a big, it's a big undertaking. It's not a, it's the same way that the climbing project, when we did that. We were the first in the world, and this project is kind of the same lines. We're gonna be the first of this tight-knit collaboration.
We get the radio system, we will be...
And what's the name of the project?
Tyler Technologies, the Tyler CAD project.
Computer aided dispatch. So if we get, remind me, the elements of Next Gen 911? Radio, CAD, incident management, climbing? So we basically have all the elements to be next gen of GIS?
GX and G.
So we will probably be one of the very first counties, at least in Mississauga, if not the United States, that's fully Next Gen 911?
It is getting there. There's some areas that are a little ahead of us, but they're ahead of us by cabinet, not by a region like this.
Right.
But our region is supposed to challenge for a lot of stuff, statewide and national. Collaboration that is happening within counties, they're having issues with getting two counties to deal with other places, so... Just a little, two roads to the town or parks. And the, and the commissioners of all the counties, because it's not just, it's not just the Public Safety Director, it's the commissioners of all the counties that are making this happen. Especially Elk County, that's been our fiduciary through all of this, and it's been extra work for Elk County to deal with this. And the same way, they're gonna be dealing with the record management and the sheriff's office, so...
Right.
I implore you, commissioners, anytime you talk to any of the Elk County commissioners, to just thank them, that we appreciate it, and it's, you know, it's a big move to the whole group. Another thing that we've been kind of looking at, we looked at this a couple of years ago, and then we've been looking at some more scheduling software. We did it back in 2015, and we looked at a company called E-Cord. Thought it was pretty good, price was very reasonable, but when we really got down to the brass tacks to it, it was really clunky, and there was a lot of stuff that it wouldn't do on the item one side. Support was a little rough. We looked at Tyler Technologies, that was a phenomenal program, but the one-time cost and reoccurring costs were just astronomical, right? Not true, it just unfathomable, it was, we're talking seventy thousand dollars to buy it, and ten or twelve thousand dollars a year...
For three, four employees?
Just for 911. So it was like, it was just not... We did have a, just two weeks ago, and then again, on Friday, a, a Lad Tech, a demonstration by them. The usability for 911 is extremely user-friendly. A lot of stuff that they can do, a lot of products that can be part of our system. And I guess it's something that we can discuss at the conference call.
Yeah.
I don't, and the one thing, that's one discussion, if I could, Ken and Scott, it would be really, really good for us, in a way. And it includes, this includes a time clock aspect to it. It would be a good system, I believe, for us, and the jail, and the sheriff's office. Now, for, for Ed or Denny, no, because...
Right.
The two-person operation, it doesn't, you know, it's not a... You know, I know there's the aspect of trying to make it look like, you know, and I'll say, make it look like it could be a county-wide product, but I don't know.
Really, jail sheriff and 911 would use it the most?
Yes, yes, and because of, because of the 24/7 operation, you know, being able to switch shifts and requesting time lost, and, you know... The horse needs a day off, she says, Ed, can I have tomorrow off? She either gives a yes or no. But when I've got people who are on midnight shifts, and I don't see them for months of time, you know, the same way with the jail, and things like that, this is, this is time-consuming. And the clock in, clock out. And one of the nice things that's about the clock in, clock out, is when you walk in there, you go to clock in, you click on your name, you put in your password, and this box, box can pop up that says, hey, you know, this new procedure's happening. Before you can, you have to read this, or whatever, before you can click the button that says, I'm clocking in, or... Or you're verifying that you know about it, or read it, things like that, it's an HR side of this, this fantastic. A lot of, you can make your own forms with them, we can save their, you know, their certifications. Verbal C-Medical Dispatch, CPR, EFB, EPE, state certifications, they can all be in there, and they can get, you know, like, sixty days before, they can send, they can get a reminder. It's pretty robust along that side.
It is a good package. I thought it was a teeny funky and maybe a bit expensive compared to other things that I've evaluated, though. So I don't wanna rush right into them as a vendor. I do wanna look at at least a couple more. I imagine these are two commissioners would also be interested in looking over an evaluation of the thing. So why don't we do this? Let's come up with a couple more, I already have a couple in mind.
Good.
Bummer about Tyler, but we may wanna try bashing them over the head and say, you know, yeah, if you really want a fully integrated, we use everything, you basically gotta give this one to us.
Yeah.
So anyway, why don't we take it offline, and we'll get a couple more, so we'll have at least, at least three quotes, then. With the problem, of course, being that it's not an apples-to-oranges thing, there's gonna be some...
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Some software's gonna have features that others don't, so we need to put a value to how much, you know, like, your train sign up, like, how much is that really worth to you? But I really think we need to include the jail probation and sheriff in it, because they have the same problem. Looking forward to the issues that we had with FSLA last year, that's so great. With when, just in the last few months of the Obama administration, they were going to change the rules. We realized at that point that we are very vulnerable to the fact that we have terrible record-keeping when it comes to clocking in and such. So we need to fix that, and it's something that's on our, on our minds, and this, I think, I don't want 911 to just kind of... Even if it works perfectly for you, I wanna make sure that it's something that could be rolled out to everybody, because...
Yeah, the time clock was a whole, I mean, it's, it's like, for 911, it's a dollar a month per employee. That's not a big deal, that one, but sort of multiplying, well, that, every county employee, you know, is a fall of your... But it's just that, you know, it is...
But it saves us some liability, and then the other thing is that most likely, that thing exports or even integrates directly with the accounting software for payable purposes.
Right.
So then you suddenly save hours for somebody's time. Because currently, we're doing a lot of manual entry, which blows my mind, but it's what we're at.
And then there tends to be problems and...
Yep. Oh, yeah. Which will be the topic of our next executive session.
And a lot of that's just nobody's fault, and, yeah, that's one of the things of, so...
All right, good, anything else?
The only other thing is, is you were there, and Commissioner Morrison was there, we discussed, we had, talking about a Public Information Officer Task Force, talking about it, you know, moving into the future of, this was just kind of stemmed a little bit from the tanker rollover in Youngsville. And then even all of the school shootings that have gone on, and other businesses, and things like that, of, we need to have a get-together of, you know, we need to bring the key players, as I put on here. If a major, if a major incident happened at a high-profile location in Warren County. And that would include, you know, some of our bigger industries, schools, retail, bigger retails, healthcare, and transportation and public safety. And we've already identified a few key players, and we are looking at possibly doing like a PIO 101, not to, not the two-day course that like Danny had been through one time, and I've been through, and Scott, and some other ones. But a, just a refresher, a couple-hour refresher, a meet and greet of like... And I just had a discussion with Dan Roman, he's kind of has the duties of security at Warren General, Rick Johnson's no longer there. But had a discussion with him, that, you know, it's not so much of meeting the CEO, or CFO, or whoever of all these organizations.
Right.
Who's gonna be speaking for this agency?
Right.
If a major incident happens? It's just having that meet and greet with those people, you know, before him.
I think that's key, because you don't want the first time they're meeting to be on the seat of the...
Correct, correct. You know, it's a little different when, you know, like today, I walk over, I didn't even know Dan Roman was doing that job. I've known Dan Roman since he was born, and the next door are my parents, so it's like, you know, I didn't even know he was doing those duties right at the moment. So it's just getting that, you know, who would be speaking for Warren General, who would be speaking for the Russell State? Who would be speaking for Walmart, the, you know, and all those businesses? The school district is already, you know, so we could use any of their buildings. So we're kind of looking at, at probably like this, the PIO 101 and type of a deal, a meet and greet in June, and then possibly doing a tabletop exercise the end of July. And then even making this part of the school district, public safety, and the Warren City Police and Fire Department are looking to do a full-scale, or doing a full-scale drill at Bayne for an active shooter, before the next school year starts. Getting all the planners, actually, at one o'clock today, there's a second planning meeting for it, so... We did this a couple of years ago in Youngsville. Full nine yards, they got a new PMC, AMET has personnel, they'll assist with this. They do the whole gamut of, they set the fire alarm off, turn all the lights off, we use smoke generators, put volunteers, volunteer teachers, volunteer students, volunteer actors, players, screaming, yelling, running, the whole gamut of it. And then it's a training session for the police, and then it's also a training session for EMS, to be escorted in by the police to remove students. And then we will also have the aspect of the PIO. And even though it's gonna be a school shooting, we can run through the scenario. I know the, I know the newspaper will be a big player in it, and I'm sure we're gonna get at least one or two of the Erie TV stations to be part of this. So we can even go through that any of these individuals say, you know, whoever, Warren General, or Walmart. It doesn't, they can act, this is, it's not happening at the school, this just happened at Walmart. And all the, and all the, you know, TV and newsprint and radios there, with microphones, you know, just to help them, too, so... Go through the scenario a little bit with that, so we'll be, we'll be training for, for the PIO side, too, and this of all of this, so... More to come on that, but I just wanted it to be you to be aware that we're looking at that. I'm hoping that, like, on that June, the June meeting, and July, and even August, it's absolutely more than welcome to be kind of part of this whole process.
Todd, aren't you gonna be dealing with different PIOs from different organizations? Because like in the example of a school shooting, it wouldn't necessarily be the Public Safety PIO.
Correct.
You'd like the sheriff, or the state police, or whoever's handling that?
Right.
And so what's the protocol, I guess, the question is, what's the protocol? Who's the PIO for this incident? And have a definition, who's coming to meet?
Well, and, and, and something like that, is like a visit to the school, the PIO should be, you know, someone from the school, not the superintendent. It should be somebody below the superintendent. And then it would be a PIO, it would be a joint, should be a joint. And that group would decide that, okay, you know, a first briefing would probably come from the police of... And that's what would be, the police would be saying, okay, this is what happened, this is what we did. And you could even have the PIO of, on the EMS side of it, says, we took this many patients, and to here, to there, to wherever. And then the same way is the PIO of the school gets up and talks about the school, whether it be, you know, it's, this is what happened, this is what we're doing, reunification is here, or, you know, along that line. So it really wouldn't be a, it's just like the incident command system, it's gonna go from, you know, you know, if an accident happens, fire chief's in charge. You know, when some things go down the line of, it goes from, you know, an active shooter to now it's a recovery, now it's a, you know, reunification. It just goes down the line of losing charge, and the same way with the PIO, who's gonna be speaking for that, for this?
Right.
Okay, anything else? Sounds like a good mobile task force.
Okay, so it's just, and then many times, is that meet and greet before something happens?
Yes. Okay. Anything else? Did it go to the order? This week, right?
No.
I'm gonna be out of the office Thursday and Friday, Thursday in Erie, Friday in Greensburg. Following week, Thursday, I'd like to close the office. I have a federal hearing down in Pittsburgh. We're taking a veteran, too, I'd like to take the lower's down to show her the proper etiquette for holding a hearing with a federal judge.
Okay. Any objections?
No.
So, schedule-wise, I, I think I said I was gonna be out the last day or two this week. I still don't know that it's happening yet, we'll see. And the next commissioner's meeting is until next week, so there's nothing I need to go, need to go with the agenda. Anything else, Ed?
I'm probably gonna be out Friday. I may make it to the VAI meeting in the morning, let's see. I may call in on that. And then the other thing is, is April 21st, the county is holding another recycling event at Sheffield High School. And that is, it's available on ECNR's website, I believe. We're gonna be putting out like a press release and some other stuff related to that. This is another one of those ones where everybody will be able to, you know, bring electronics, house appliances, chemicals, other materials.
And this one will be held where?
At Sheffield High School. And basically, I think they'll start at 10:00 or 11:00, and then go until 1:00 or 2:00, and, um... So far, they've been very well attended. We're gonna try to pump this one up a little bit more, just 'cause I don't think we've gone that far southeast in the, in the county yet, so...
That's gonna be open to the entire county?
Everybody, yeah. Anything can drop electronics and other materials up.
And do they have to do the reservation, or...
Yeah, they go to ECNR's website, which... Yeah, they go to, um, ECNR's website, which, uh, just. I can't remember the, I can't remember the bit, you know, off the top of my head.
I tried to find it in the good files.
You're gonna, you're gonna be sending out a link on that?
Yep. That's, that's all I have right now.
All right, anything else? Thanks for coming.